Yeah, she's good. She just said.
So it's.
Good evening. Oh.
It's the NCAA playoffs. It's the last game.
She's talking. I thought it was Jamie.
Julie?
What?
It's very important.
I know. Let's move it. Let's move it. Okay. Good evening. I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Monday, April 8, 2019. And as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chair prior to the start of the meeting. Earlier this evening, we were in executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to conduct collective bargaining sessions for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Assistant Town Administrative Position. And based on discussion, the board has asked for some additional information. Those items will be provided to the board, and we will bring this back. So in that regard, we will be holding under new business B, C, and D this evening. So I just want to make you aware of that. And if you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anybody for weekly briefing?
I have three things, but I could do two under announcements if you wish, or just all three at the same time.
All three.
Okay. So first, I just wanted to announce to the town. First, I'm Amy Usowski, Conservation Administrator. It is endangered shorebird season once again. We have nesting piping pullovers on a couple of our beaches, and we've been inspecting the other beaches as well, just walking the shoreline, as required by state law for us to do so. This year, we, instead of using mass Audubon and hiring mass Audubon to do that monitoring, myself, our Assistant Agent Nicole Smith, and hopefully a new part-time hire are going to be taking that over. So again, you'll be seeing that because maybe some budget transfer involved there. But we're going to be taking that in-house. So we do have nesting piping pullovers currently. We are hoping to make them happy, get them nesting, and get them out of here. Not that we don't love them, but management in the height of the summer season can be very difficult. So the sooner we can have them nest and lay eggs and hatch, the sooner we can get them out of here. And we also have to monitor for a variety of tern species as well, and we do have colonies in town. So if people see our symbolic fencing up at the beaches, please just mind it. It's not all encompassing on the beaches. There's still plenty of room to walk. We're going to do our best to both meet the regulations and keep the beaches open as much as possible for the public. So if anybody has any questions about nesting shorebirds, they can feel free and call myself or Nicole at the Conservation Department here at Town Hall. Any questions on that?
No, thank you.
Okay. Next, just two events. We have the Arbor Day Seedling Giveaway. It's an annual event. As always, it's on the last Friday of April, so Friday, April 26, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. The Harwich Conservation Department will be giving away a variety of native plant species such as Papa and persimmon trees, false indigo shrubs, maiden hair fern plugs, and as always, a Northeast Wildflower seed mix if you do not want any of the larger plants. It is a giveaway. It is free. Weather permitting, will be out in the back parking lot. If it's not permitting, we'll just be in the Town Hall foyer. And we will not be starting to give them away until 9:00 a.m. So if people arrive at 8:30, they'll have to wait. There's quite the demand usually. And next is our fifth annual, I can't believe it's fifth annual already, Tour to Trash Community Cleanup. It's the day after Arbor Day Seedling Giveaway, so it's a big week for conservation that week. It's also Earth Week that week. So Saturday, April 27, from 9:30 to about 11:30 is when the actual community cleanup will be. You can sign up on the Harwich Conservation Trust website and pick the route that you and your family or friends want to clean around town. You bring everything back to the community center in their parking lot. We separate trash and recycling is separated out, and we also provide you lunch, which is, again, this year, going to be courtesy of Stop &amp; Shop. And let's see, I think that's, I think that's it. Again, if you have any questions, feel free and call myself at the Conservation Department or call the Harwich Conservation Trust.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anybody for a public comment and announcement? Hearing nobody, can I get a motion on the consent?
Madam Chair, I'd like to present the consent agenda and move adoption of the items thereon, including the minutes of February 9, 2019, regular session.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, yes. We will hold on the minutes of March 25. A vote to authorize the Town Administrator to opt-in and sign the statewide Public Safety Mutual Aid Agreement per the request of the Police Chief. Vote to authorize the Town Administrator to sign a mutual aid agreement for the Cape and Islands region per the request of the Police Chief, and accept the gift of a memorial tree and plaque in honor of Charles W. Kale.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. New business, Classification of Plan Adjustments. Robert Lawton, Recreational Program Specialist 2.
I have several this evening. We've been working on for the past several months, going in order. The first on the Recreation Specialist 2. This was a position that has been already classified. The person in the position is being paid at the correct amount, and for some reason there was no job description. So a job description was written, reviewed, in the normal way, desk audit, et cetera, and that is before use. And there is no money involved in this. The person is already being paid, as I stated before, at this rate.
Thank you.
Ask your approval for the job description.
Move to accept the job description as written.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I do have a point, and that is, you know, well done. What's missing in my mind as an essential function is any financial reporting or financial activity. You know, we've asked before, you know, because he has a number of, the person has numerous programs, and the last, I think, last meeting actually provided revenue and expenses. Not fully, because it wasn't some, you know, cost expenses. But I think that's an important part of this position as we, as we move forward, that, you know, it's important that our programs be financially viable as well, because there may become a point where we have to prioritize what we can offer. So I'd like to see that added. You're looking like I may have missed it.
No, just want to make sure I understand it. On the first page on Number 11, receives payment for activities, records all money's future bookkeeping deposits. That's not what you're.
That's not what I'm after. That's a, that's a bookkeeping activity. I'm looking for information on the revenues received, expenses, and time used in other departments so we can evaluate what the, what's going on with the programs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is not the Director of Record Youth. This is a subordinate employee.
Oh, it is. I thought it was the Director.
Yeah, it's not the Director.
But you'd be right for that. I agree.
No, you're absolutely right. Yeah, that was confusing.
Bring that point back when it's relevant, then.
I like that.
This is the person that's out in the field running the programs.
Right.
Got it.
Okay. So it's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Video and Community Information Specialist, Bob?
This also started just before I came back. The job description was reviewed with the Collective Bargaining Unit and with the employee and the Director of the Channeling Team. The. Throw me off.
That was for Larry.
Oh, that was for Larry. Okay.
That's another point.
One of the major items is that the position will be doing some computer work. The person now is doing the website for the town, and there was an adjustment based upon the review and the scoring. So currently, it's a grade two, which is very low, step six, and what we're requesting is that the position go to grade six, step three. This would not be effective until July 1 of 2019.
Thank you.
And the funding is available through the Channel 18 appropriation.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, Bob, this, nothing in here would imply that this person would actually be responsible for the actual content on the web, right? I mean, it's just the mechanism of getting into the web.
As an example, when we do a bid, I send the package to this person, and they put it on the web. They don't critique it. They don't, unfortunately, correct my spelling.
No, I just.
Things of that nature, but.
I just wanted that for the record, because in the past, there's been some inference that the person would be responsible for the actual content as to both legal and programmatic implications. It doesn't read that way, and nobody's saying that.
And Jamie can certainly back that up. I think that's right. There we go.
Just wanted the minutes.
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, Michael?
Yeah, I would just like to, Bob, you weren't here. We discussed this in a different union, I guess, as far as the step changes and pay changes last week in executive session. I'd like to see, and it was mentioned at that point, the total cost. I can figure out what $1.58 a week, an hour, times 35 hours a week, times 52 weeks is. I can figure it out. I would rather it was just in there.
Yes, that makes sense.
And the other thing that we discussed, the board didn't vote it. I thought we were going to have that in executive, executive session this week. But Carol Coppola, our Finance Director, in my mind, should be involved with anything to do with money that's going to affect the budget. And the next one that's coming up does affect the current budget, and there is no recommendation in there from Carol Coppola. So if you're doing these, which I don't imagine you're going to be doing these much longer until next year, there's, I'd like to have the whole, the whole picture.
The cost, if in this case it was the.
$1.58 an hour.
Multiply it out.
Right. And I guess to Chris, I would like, we talked about Carol being involved in all of this. I would like Carol's recommendation and writing to the board when we get this.
Just on, just for clarification purposes, we did have Carol come in, and she's been brought up to date on the collective bargaining. So this is more individual job descriptions. I think actually the second one here on the Assistant Collector Treasurer, she had input because that's in her department. But we don't generally have her in other departments for, relevant to this, but.
I, it's only my own opinion. The board can take it up. It's a money issue, and it's a budget issue. And for me, I'm going to be a lot more comfortable if Carol's involved.
I'll have, I'll have, what, three more on the 24th, and I can make sure that happens.
Thank you.
If I can add to that.
Sure.
That's a good point. For me, I'd also like to understand where they are in the steps as well, since we've increased some of these steps available. You know, we added the step 11 and 12, so understand the total compensation.
These, I don't believe any of the people we're talking about this evening are involved in that. That's SEIU. These are all HGA, and their steps are.
Steps are the same.
But I can get that on.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the reclassification and the description write-up of the Video and Community Information Specialist as provided in the packet.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. The Assistant Collector Treasurer.
Maybe I can make a motion, and then we can discuss. I'd like to move that we accept the recommendation for the reclassification and the position description write-up for the Assistant Collector Treasurer as provided in the packet.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Michael?
This is the one that impacts. This is, we're recommending that we adopt the classification, but we're also recommending that we give back pay. Correct?
Yes, that was the request of Amy Bullock, yeah, Amy Bullock. She wanted to go back, and I believe, to January 1.
Okay, so that, to me, is a number that we should be discussing. I mean, if it's going to impact a budget that's already existing, I guess I'd like to have an explanation as to why we're doing this retroactively. And then, I guess, hear from Carol that it's okay to take money from someplace else to fill this in.
Carol is.
Carol's here.
I don't know if she wants to.
Do you want to speak to that, Carol?
I did it because it was, it was a request, and I believe, the request she.
Excuse me.
So Carol, just to clarify, if I may, Madam Chair, just to clarify my question. This word, being asked to renegotiate the salary, I'm not sure the amount, because it's not in here completely, but I'm sure we could figure it out quickly. Where's the money coming from? Is it there? Because it's going to affect this budget, not next budget.
So I honestly, I was not aware that you were, it was going to happen this year. I thought it would be July 1, so I can't answer your question.
Thank you, Carol. Maybe we table, maybe we table this one and bring it back next week, and Amy can explain why we're asking to go back.
Withdraw my motion.
And you can have all the numbers.
Withdraw the motion.
Okay. So you withdraw your second, Ed?
Sure.
Thanks. Okay, so we'll bring that back. Community Center Customer Service Representative, Wait Room.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Community Center Customer Service Representative, Wait Room, reclassification and job description as contained in our packet.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
So it'll only ask, Chris, you plug this number into the budget coming up.
Carolyn did, I believe. We've had a tough time recruiting and keeping people in this position. The pay is just too low.
But it is figured into the FY '20 budget.
It isn't for '20.
It's my understanding that she did include that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So it's moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then B, C, and D were holding. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
And E, Non-Union Pay Schedule Adjustments. Number one, version one, consistent with the current budget schedule. And Chris, do you want?
So Madam Chair, you do have a schedule here that shows, well, two things as indicated. Version one is basically, and just for folks at home, this is the management schedule that would be adopted. There was, generally, there's been a rule where we try to have the management schedule mirror the schedule of the management personnel, which is, the management personnel are in a collective bargaining agreement. We did have, in the collective bargaining agreement, higher than, higher than anticipated increases. And so schedule of version two basically mirrors the SEIU contract in those amounts. And then, under Personnel Bylaw, in which we drop step one and add a step 11 and 12 to now create a range from 3 to 12, so we keep the 10 steps, but just move things a little bit differently. That schedule, and actually, just to say, version two, we did provide in the material all the non-union and the management, non-union scale, and that overall averages to 8.25%, which mirrors the collective bargaining agreement with the managers. And then the second one would be the intended, by administration, the intended progression, and that is 3.47% overall increase.
Michael?
Madam Chair, if memory serves me correct, this, this was supposed to be in an executive session. We spoke about this in executive session last week. We asked for further information, which I believe this is the further information, and it was requested that we bring it back. Am I, am I missing something?
Yeah, I don't believe we can have an executive session for non-union personnel unless it was going to be to negotiate an employment contract. So none of these people have employment contracts. So it has to be done in an open session, is the long and the short of it.
Okay, just for, I guess, just for clarification, we did start this conversation related to SEIU, and this conversation pertained to both. And as far as I know, we didn't take any action last week on the numbers from SEIU.
On SEIU, the board directed me to adhere to the contract. If, if the board wants to adhere to the contract, then that would be to adopt version two, is to, to match up to the management contract.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was my recollection, and before anybody thinks I've become a wild-eyed spender here. We spent, and I, I'm going to say what I said in the executive session because it's an identical sentiment. We spent the better part of a year and a half trying to parse out the relative value of all of these positions, both within the organizational structure, but what's, what's a town clerk worth compared to a librarian or whatever? We spent the better part of a year and a half doing that within the town structure and across the same job description in other towns. We finally felt like we nailed it proportionately. And the reason that we're not, we're even having this discussion is because it wasn't a mere error that we could have corrected with the SEIU. We would have had to open up the contract negotiation again. Notwithstanding whose mistake that was or how it came to pass, if we try to put the genie back in the bottle here, we got the exact same problem we started out a year and a half trying to solve, that these people in these positions are worth this much relative to other positions, and we're blowing that up if we don't go, if we don't at least marry these people with a plan and then try to make sure we cap future years and get back the relative value to the regular employee structure. I, I think we'd be dealing in bad faith because these people were vulnerable. They didn't have a contract, but the other people did have a contract. Nonetheless, the problem still remains. What are these people worth relative to other people? And just because you're being boxed in with a contract on one portion of that isn't a good, isn't a real good reason to say, okay, but we can fix it on at least this one side, because then you're messing up the relationships again.
Chris?
So Madam Chair, maybe to put it in context, I don't necessarily disagree, and maybe I kind of misspoke. I think in the, just for history, the SEIU contract had two elements to it. In the last agreement that was done four years ago at this point, we had agreed, Administration and the Board of Selectmen had agreed, to look at individual positions to make sure those individual positions were consistent with the marketplace on Cape Cod. So we went through and established a process to review all 18 positions, and adjustments were made. Some adjustments were minor, some had no adjustments, and some adjustments were fairly large. In this latest round of negotiations, the one thing that came out is that in the final round of going through the 18, we found as a general pattern in the town that the SEIU, the managers' job descriptions in general, and the marketplace in particular, that we were too low at the hiring end and too low at the max end. So that what we found is that we are missing where people are at the lower third of pay, and we're trying to adjust them up. So the latest SEIU contract, which is a three-year contract, this is the second year of it, calls to make that adjustment, a market rate adjustment, to bring them closer to their peers. I think to Selectman Howell's point, if we want to, that same trend does exist on the non-union side, but we did look at individual positions, any ones that have been adjusted. I think almost all of these have been looked at at one point in time, and we had those adjustments. And again, we moved people from the lower third to the middle third, and what we're trying to do on these schedules is to bring them up. So it is a market adjustment. If we want to bring them up consistent with what we did with the managers, that the, then version two would be the appropriate version. If we want to bring them up in a slower process but get to the same end result, then version one would accomplish that.
Any other questions, comments?
So what's the question tonight?
Which version?
Which version?
The Selectmen should adopt a version. This is for non-union people, which we do year to year.
Okay. Going back to the union contract settlement, there obviously, part of the contract settlement was, um, uh, cost of living increase, and part of it was this market adjustment.
Correct.
And the, what's being proposed is that the non-union managers group receive the cost of living increase as opposed to both the cost of living increase and the market adjustment that was determined based on looking at a different class of employees. Because we didn't, in looking at those employees in other towns, we didn't look at the non-union employees in those towns. We looked in.
Well, we, we have studied each of these positions, like the town clerk in particular, and we did that adjustment on an individual basis.
So we did the market.
Market-wise.
Last year.
Last year. Market-wise, what we found is our schedule is behind others, and a general increase in the market rate adjustment is being called for.
For the union class of management employees.
And version two here would be to do the same for the non-union people.
To tie it.
To tie it to it. That's correct.
But is that based on a separate look or simply adopting the market conclusion?
Adopting the market conclusions made in the non, in the union schedules.
Okay.
And just 8.25, the, the cost of living is 2%, so 6.25 is the adjustment on version two, and then 3.47, so that would be 2% for the cost of living adjustment, and then 1.47 for the market adjustment. So it's a slower market adjustment.
Good evening, Chief.
I, good evening, board members, and Chris, and Bob. I'm going to reiterate what I said before. However this happened, whether it was a mistake, whether it was a whatever, it doesn't matter. That's not my position. I'm going to say it again. I'll speak for two, two members that are non-union folks, that as, as the chief, I worked hard to get my number two out of the union, because I felt it was only right that I had that backup, and the same for the Deputy Police Chief. And we successfully did that on good faith. We simply took, again, for those two positions, and they were plugged into the SEIU chart of pay. Now, if there was some sort of mistake made, whatever you want to call it, and they, and the folks in the union are going to get more than they really thought they were going to, and they're worth every penny, that's fine. But just because these other folks aren't union members, you cannot discriminate against them. In good faith, I am going to, I'm, I'm very strong on this. If they were plugged into a chart that, also that the union members were plugged into, they too need to be treated the same.
Thank you. Anything more from the board?
Go ahead.
Don?
Well, at least to get a discussion going, I'd like to make a motion that we accept version two as the pay plan.
Thank you. Michael, did you want to follow up on?
I'll second that so that we can have some conversation.
Moved and seconded.
I guess, the first question I have is for Chris, because this is, this is a very interesting place that the board has been put. Now, I have to agree with Norm, because I believe that these employees should be treated the same, since we are mirroring the two, or have had many conversations about mirroring the two. But I'm not sure we can discuss the conversation that we had in the SEIU collective bargaining, the conversation we had in executive session last week. I'm not sure that we can say there was a mistake made or not a mistake made. So I guess I would ask Chris to clarify, because I'd like to, I'd like to express my opinion, but I'm not sure I can.
I'm trying to follow your, your question.
Question is, we met on this in executive session last week to talk about SEIU.
Yeah, I, I think in terms of the advice that I had received is that, as Don has kind of alluded to, we have signed a collective bargaining agreement. Obviously, the recommendation is to adhere to that collective bargaining agreement.
The question is, can we discuss that now, since it was done in executives? Our conversation about why this happened was in executive session last week.
It's a signed contract.
It's a signed contract.
I think it's, because if you're going to go into the area of what the level is, then it's a negotiated agreement, and that, that would probably be fine. is, then it's a negotiated agreement and that, that would probably be fine. If there was a discussion that led to potentially reopening it, then that would not be satisfied for open meeting.
Not interested in reopening anything on the SEIU. I'm interested on whether or not we can discuss the conversation we had as to why it happened last week in executive session, right now.
Yeah, we're, i- if it's how did we get to the percentages that we got, then yes, that I think that that is, because that matter has already been adjudicated and there's no more rationale for executive session on it.
Okay. With that said, I think that there, it's important for the taxpayers to know, there was no, we were doing compensation studies and raising people's pay, there was never a discussion on giving nine percent raises, eight and a half to nine percent raises, correct? Chris?
Well, just to be clear, that what was intended is to do the market adjustment, to do that six percent over a two-year period. The six percent happened in one year.
Okay.
So, it, it's accelerated, but the end result gets us to the same point on version two.
It happens faster.
It happens faster.
Correct. So, and with that said, I don't see how we as a board could vote not to treat people the same because there was a mistake made on one and it was caught on another. So, I guess I'll ask my normal question. Carol, there's a forty thousand dollar difference here? Where's that money in the budget for next year?
So, part of that is the water department, so that'll play, that'll reduce that number. But we'll have to go back to the, back to the table and make some, you know, other reductions or, or bring forward some new numbers for you.
Thank you. And with, with that, I would ask how we're gonna vote on this without that information.
Madam Chair, as I alluded to before, we obviously do three or four different budget amendments to get us from where we were with the original budget to when we prepped for town meeting. So, the, the thirty to forty thousand dollars will be identified and presented as a budget amendment for the board's consideration, probably in the next week or two, we'll put that together.
All right. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In, in answer to that, to Michael's question, this, this is, in my view, this is a moral obligation because we, there was, that's the whole point about doing that whole endeavor, about figuring out what everything's relatively valued, valued at, contract or not contract. So, having said that, I think that's a separate discussion about where we're happy taking the money out of the current proposed budget to fund this, but that doesn't let us off the hook for saying that we really need to accept this as what we're gonna pay them and then come up with whatever choices that we want. If we don't hear the right choice, we send them back to the drawing board and ask for another cut somewhere. But they're disparate issues. You can't tie one to the other because if you really believe that these should be tied to the SEIU contract, then we should vote this and then ask for the amendment later, presuming we're gonna have that agenda item before town meeting.
Ed, did you have a question, comment?
So, I guess my, my one question is, I know in the case of the town clerk last year, as we were talking about what to do with her salary, with the belief that she had fallen behind the market, which she had, and we had the documentation for that, is how to sort of create a system, uh, to put her into the town's salary structure in such a way that one, that she would, that position would maintain pace over time and would allow for when we bring in somebody new, because it's the odd position of being an elected position, that we have a, a structure that would allow, uh, the recognition that the new person may not have the extensive level of qualifications and certification that our current town clerk does. And so, you know, so we, we looked to the salary classification in the SEIU to find that grade that matched her level of responsibility as a place to put her, put that position. And I'm assuming we've done that with all of the other non-union positions.
Yeah, just, the only thing that, with the town clerk, that there's two things which makes this position unique. Because it's an elected full-time position, the way the previous system worked is that she would just get, in this case, she, would just get a one-dollar amount that was voted at town meeting. And to my knowledge, and certainly I've only been the administrator for five years, but she didn't always keep pace with the other non-union. So, what was done last year was a market analysis to see where, what slot she should be in. So, in the schedule, it was an M5, and then to also recommend a town meeting that for personnel purposes, that if she were to retire and someone else, or two people ran, and one has ten years' experience, one has two years' experience, how do you slot them into the system? And that's why we have a ten-step system that she, those people would be slotted based upon the recommendation, for better or for worse, of the administrator as the personnel director.
Okay. So, but for the other non-union, have we done the market analysis for all of those positions?
Yes, over, over the last two to three years, yes.
So, they're all...
They're all slotted in the schedule.
Reasonably up to date?
With the adjustment to the overall schedule, yes.
Okay.
On schedule two, though.
Reasonably up to date being the opposite.
They're up to date on schedule two, but they don't, on schedule one, that would blow that up.
Well...
I just, I just wanted to point out that under Dawn's motion, the town clerk's included in that, so...
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, I know. I fully understand that. But, yeah, what was throwing me is we did the market analysis for the town clerk last year, and so, but I wasn't, wasn't aware that the other, that there had been, and the market analysis done for all the other non-union positions, but...
Yeah, and when we presented the budget, just to that point, one of the things that we also adjusted was on our minimum wage that we had, the lowest entry wage, we were below, so we did intentionally, and it's in these scales where we moved them up. Right now, I believe it's thirteen dollars an hour. So, historically, we've been at about a dollar an hour above, and we were losing people for, they weren't coming to the golf, they weren't coming to recreation because they could get more money at Stop &amp; Shop and those places. So, we've done market adjustments on a class scale, if you would, a class of employees, and overall, we did the adjustment to match up on the managers' union with the manager's contract.
Okay. Any other, Larry?
Well, at this point, as I think we're all saying, we don't have a choice. But I remind you, eight percent increase on a sixty-two million dollar budget is still a lot of money going into that. And my point is, we're gonna have to really watch next year, especially since we did some of these in one year rather than two years, is to be, bring this back down to more of what the inflation rate is rather than, much higher than that.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Totally agree. The point that I was making was, we had all of this analysis done, we did all these market rate things, and positions are worth what they are relative to others. The remedy here is when the SEIU contract expires, we use that as experiential information so that we go into the negotiations saying, okay, but this happened for whatever reason, and therefore, everything that's tied to that is going to put the brakes on, you know, for a while until we can get some sort of parity about what we really thought we should be at. But right now, if we don't vote yes on this, we're blowing up the whole endeavor and we're starting over again.
Well, I'm agreeing, we have to start. I'm just going to the future, we're gonna have to watch this very carefully.
And we have to promise to go back again and look this over in future years so that we don't just continue to give more on it.
We, because we can't afford it. Chris, if I can change the related subject on this, we've been, Bob's been bringing in position descriptions to us for some time, and what I'd asked for, probably a couple months ago now, was an organizational chart that tied those position descriptions together so they could go one to the other and get a full picture of how salaries and workflows. Could I make that request again? I, I think in an organization, it'd be important to know that, of, of how, you know, how these positions are related to each other, so we get a better view of what they're...
I think we do have a, a job description book. We could do an org chart to try to match up with the book.
Match that up.
What if he changes?
Flowchart with money.
Yeah. Just one thing, you know, we have four people in the office. We've been running with two plus Bob.
I understand that. I'm reminding you because I'm not giving up on it.
Yeah, no, I, I'm with you.
Bob will always be there.
I just, when, when you run short, you have to do kinda, I just wanna just say this for the board, and I think Norm, Norm made an interesting comment. The Montemoy, when we talked about Montemoy and Montemoy salaries, they were in the top third of the Cape Cod marketplace. On the town side, we are in the bottom third. This moves us from the bottom third to the middle. And part of the reason why I think the board agreed with this philosophy and, and the board wanted to adopt this, is that we were losing people to smaller towns. And how do we make sure we prevent a, a brain drain? We need to constantly kind of monitor where we are in the marketplace. We need to make sure that we don't lose people and that we stay competitive. If other towns start doing as, for instance, three percent increases on coal, as if we stick to two percent, then we are gonna, we're gonna move back down to that bottom third. So, the only thing I caution is that it is a little bit of a moving target, and we are one town in the marketplace of Cape Cod. So, we're relevant to what other towns do. And that's really my only point. We will monitor that, and as much as we're able to make sure we maintain some competitiveness with the fiscal realities that exist, we'll certainly do that.
And I'll stop the discussion. I, I agree with that point. I would remind everyone though that the, in terms of retaining people, salaries one component of overall job satisfaction, so we have to be sure we watch how we're handling the, so I'm asking for the organizational charts and position descriptions, how they relate to each other. Also, we comment that we don't have an infinite supply of money, and so at some point, we may, can only go so far. And so, it's all, we have to be sure we consider all the aspects going into this.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I just wanna follow up on what, what Larry said. Larry, you've been asking for the org chart for as long as I can, I can remember, since you got back on. So, I do appreciate Chris running for, too short, but I think we wanna make sure that Chris knows it's the consensus of the board that we want that. And then the other piece of information I'd like is just, I'd like that, that market study, if you could distribute that to the board. You mentioned over a two or three year period, we did a market study for employees. Can we forward that information to the board?
Yeah, anytime we do an adjustment, the board has it, so it's not one town-wide, if you would. It's really more just the accumulation of all the individual of that analysis.
And if I remember correctly, when you did that, though, every time you did it, you gave us a chart.
Absolutely.
Saying, well, if you could forward those charts to the board, please?
Yeah, we did get those in terms of when we were looking at certain positions, so if we just put them all in one, one spot. Any other questions, comments? Can I get a motion?
No, we have a motion.
Did you make, oh, sorry.
That was an hour or two.
All right, so no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. It's unanimous, right?
Yep.
Okay. Contracts, excuse me, contracts, recommendations for wastewater project manager.
I'm gonna let Bob do this one, too. He actually did a lot of the paperwork, so I wanted him to be able to review this.
I won't bother to read the two-page memo. We did try to outline the process we used in order to make the recommendations to the board, and we did, the committee did decide to recommend the Weston Sampson proposal. And there was, as you see in the second to the last paragraph, as per chapter 30B, after you have rated the two firms, then you have the right to go back and review the cost proposal, and the cost proposal was lowered from the ninety-five, I'm sorry, the six, ninety-four thousand four hundred to seventy-five thousand dollars. And that would be what would be requested.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I guess I have at least one. I appreciate the work and the process in this one going through. I did request the, because it wasn't in our packet, request the information from the second proposal. Company called, there was two people in town, Bad Aqua, I don't know where that name came from.
He said, "We can't make T-shirts out of that, it is copyrighted." I asked.
I know that. You know, my concern is Weston Sampson is obviously a well-thought and well-recognized firm, you know, highly regarded engineering firm. But as I recall, or at least my, if somebody's guessing, I see we have a person from the wastewater support committee here.
Former.
Former, former member.
No such committee, right?
Yeah, well, the, the primary objectives of this, of this position was our relationships and communication with the community. And maybe I'd like some more discussion from, from you folks and anyone else in the board.
Thank you.
I do like Bad Aqua in terms that they are local, they know everyone, they were involved in a lot of the activity, and I think they are probably, there's possibility there'd be a fair amount, a stronger asset in terms of communicating, relating information to the community from CDM Smith and, you know, town staff than Weston Sampson is. So, I, I do have some reservations. I'd like to, I guess, understand better before agreeing to Weston Sampson is who exactly are they going to assign to this project? Because in the normal, in the normal course of how people respond to this, they start with the CEO down. Well, I don't expect to see the CEO here, and I don't expect to stop, and we don't want them, quite frankly. We want people who are gonna communicate. We don't need another high-powered engineer as much as we need a high-powered communicator.
Yeah, I, I do think to that, their proposal was a hybrid, a hybrid approach. One part of that was Charlie Sumner, who I think is a very well-respected retired administrator from Brewster, so very familiar with the, with the area. Charlie was a very hands-on administrator, so a lot of projects, he did some of the oversight, he did the reach out to the community, the interaction with the general public. So, Charlie would be the, the day-to-day contact. I think part of what, what made the, the difference is, well, Charlie needs to have a, a support element to him, that if questions come up on a technical basis, obviously, we had a suction lift versus a submersible discussion.
I remember that.
Here at the board. And I think having Weston and Sampson, a company that is more in that field, certainly Weston and Sampson operates the facility over in Chatham, so they are very familiar with the, the Chatham operation, and we will be plugging into the Chatham operation. I think at least for me, and certainly for the, I think for the committee members, it was the combination of Weston and Sampson having the expertise and background, and then Charlie understanding what can be done municipal law-wise and how to outreach to people, that Charlie was the, that was a stronger combination, I think, in our minds. So, we graded them as highly advantageous versus the, the two local folks that created the company as advantageous. But I think the combination of having somebody that knows the municipal field, has interacted with people on a very one-on-one basis, as he did a lot in Brewster, was one of the key deciding points for, for us.
Any other questions?
No, I do, I wanna raise that for the general discussion, that was my point, but I, because I...
Thank you, Larry. Michael?
There's only two legend town administrators I know on the Cape, and it's Bob Lawton and Charlie Sumner, so I can't say enough about Charlie. I guess my question is... I guess my question is, and the RFP isn't in here. The revised scope of work doesn't match the RFP. There's several things missing in the, in the proposal. I guess in the revised scope of work, I should say. But as discussed and requested by the town in our recent interview, Weston Sampson Engineering, Inc. is providing the following revised scope of services as needed, in quotes, scope of work for the project. And then if you read the next paragraph, I guess my question is, based on the RFP we submitted for people to reply to, what's the percent difference in the RFP between what, what we asked for and what people were able to provide quotes for and what we have in front of us? And was Bad Water, or whatever it was called?
Bad Aqua.
Bad Aqua, were they given the opportunity to come and sit with you to revise as well?
Yeah, I think the only thing in terms of, in order for an RFP, you have to try to grade them in a certain way by saying, I think we put in there four hundred hours. We put in a, a element that said four hundred hours for both. The question that was asked of both was, what do we get for the four hundred hours? And we don't want you just to do make-work to get to the four hundred hours. Would you be flexible and responsive to the needs of the community? So in this case, Charlie had indicated that if he needs to be out one week for twenty hours, he'll be out one week for twenty hours. If he only needs to be out for five hours, he's not gonna do make-work. In fairness, I think we did get a similar reaction to the, from the, from the Bad Aqua people when we asked them the same question. But the, the question really was, we don't want you to just bill us to the max and not really provide, you know, provide service, but, but just do extra for the sake of billable hours. We wanted to see if the person would be responsive to just address the needs of the community. And they both basically indicated that they would address the needs of the community. But that's what that means.
So given that, how much, how much of the scope of the original RFP is not included in the new scope of work? I mean, I remember arguing that the RFP that we put together, and that we took so long to put together and finally published, that there was things in there about building Facebook pages and lots of, lots of extra work that I didn't see an engineering firm. Ed was pushing for a more professional project manager like they had on the school. And I didn't see a lot of that extra work was something that somebody was gonna bid on, or that we weren't gonna get many bids. And as it is now, we only have two bids. And this one, in my mind, is revised enough where maybe we should be thinking about putting it back out with a more defined RFP. The only one sentence that, that strikes me is, "Our intention is to be sensitive to project efficiencies and costs by not duplicating effort that is commonly provided as part of the construction engineering services, typically provided by the design engineer on sewer extension projects." And if I, if I remember Ed's argument, isn't that what we want? Don't we want somebody that's gonna critique it? Somebody that's, I'm not saying to re-engineer it, but don't we want somebody that's gonna call out problems as they see it? Isn't that more in line with a project manager?
I think that you get a little bit of, what, what they're looking at is a peer review. They wouldn't go in, nor do we want them to redesign, if you would, a pump station, because Weston Sampson does pump stations a little differently than CDM. So they would do a peer review and make sure that what's being designed makes sense, but they wouldn't redesign it. So we asked them for that. We don't need somebody to come in and redesign something that's already been designed. We need it to be peer-reviewed, so that way, if there's something that is of issue, then they have the opportunity to have it be corrected. So we're trying to differentiate a review of it, which is what a consultant would do, versus redesigning the whole system.
Go ahead, Larry.
Good points, Michael. I, I'm not, I'm not as concerned, because I see this more as a somewhat flexible response to what we hear from the community and their, and their needs to understand the project and, and questions they have. I think it's, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had no idea that pumps were gonna be an important topic for us. When they start construction this spring, I'm not sure we know yet what's gonna be the biggest communication emphasis that we want them to work on and get back to us on. So I, I don't expect anyone to do all these RFP dot points specifically in, in each week or each month. You know, it's things that we want to be sure they keep their eye on to be sure the project's moving forward.
Thank you, Larry. Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hear everyone's concern, but I, I feel we're just about at the point where we're creating a circular firing squad here. We can kill this off, but they're gonna be building this thing whether we want to go out for another bid or not. And we're at that point where we need somebody. Perhaps the other contractor would have had a leg up on some things, although I have to say, I take no great joy in saying this because the two people who are the principals of that, I know, and I'm sure they'd be competent. I had concerns going in about whether or not there would be a conflict of interest. At least one of them was on the board that signed the contract to get this sewer project going. Was involved with the inter-ministerial agreement with Chatham. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm sure that they asked the question, but you know with lawyers, the way you ask the question is the way you get the answer. I have concerns because once again, we don't have a cover page that says, as the town administrator, I've taken their recommendation and I endorse that, and I'm recommending you vote on it. But having said all of that, in a perfect world, maybe we could dot all those i's and cross all those t's. But we're gonna have backups coming in pretty soon, and we need to be ready for that if we can do either the project management or the outreach for this. I think they're well-positioned. I mean, Weston Sampson has built systems, so it wouldn't take them long to delve into a contract issue on the ground about whether or not what's being built is really what should be built, which is what a project manager would do. And the outreach part of it, I mean, anybody who's ever dealt with Charlie, he's methodical and he just dives into stuff. So I'm pretty sure that they can nail both sides of this and get us where we want to go. But I'm just as certain, if we don't vote something tonight, we're gonna be sitting here four years from now talking about, geez, it would have been nice to have a project manager back in the day. So we gotta do something.
Any other discussion? Any other comments?
Just one. Nope, just so everyone's clear, nope, no concerns with Weston Sampson's being competent. The, the last question I have is, in the RFP, it did mention the CWMP, our Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. There's several things that we're supposed to be following up and following through on in the CWMP. I don't see that in their scope of work. Maybe I'm missing it.
And documenting.
If it's not in their scope of work and it's not documented, to Don's new point, who is doing that? That was a big concern of the board.
They, they agreed to meet all the terms of the RFP, so if the RFP said, you know, to have those committees and get the documentation, that would be on Charlie to do that.
Is that gonna be added to the scope of work? Because that.
It's already included, so we wouldn't have to add what's.
Because it's in the RFP?
It's in the RFP.
Okay. Thank you.
Because that's coming up. They, they, we were, excuse me, they were presented at the Y collaborative, they were presented the draft for what the next requirements are gonna be from us, from the CWMP. It's not yet, it'll be in a few months, but it's coming.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, the recommendation of the evaluation committee and award the contract for the project management of the wastewater phase one for, for this contract. To Weston Sampson, and what's that amount that you negotiated down?
Seventy-five.
Seventy, seventy-five. In the total amount of seventy-five thousand dollars as contained in our packet.
Seconded.
Seconded. Four twenty.
Larry.
Larry. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And now we'll go to the town administrators' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things this evening. I just wanted to thank you for, we, the voter information people had a presentation today about the financial state of the town, and I know it's hard to, people that come out from work, but I thought that was a pretty good session. I think that was one of the quickest sessions, about forty minutes that it ran, that we participated in. So if people are interested to see about that, having a cross-section of the, the leadership team of the community, that was done this morning. I'm not sure when that's gonna be permanently aired, but it will be on several times before town meeting. And then also, the voter information folks are gonna do a presentation or a overview on April twenty-second of the warrant review. So several different items that they think town meeting may have some value for walking through. So I did alert the different department heads this morning in regards to attending that. On the Montemoy Regional School District did provide, I don't know if it's fully what I was looking for or not, but the five-year administrative salary and FDE data. I'll defer to Don on, on that under the, under that part of the form. And then on the, kind of a good news front, I have been searching and haven't been able to find, but the state is in the process of putting together the contract materials, and we have been awarded, will be shortly awarded, the six-hundred-and-fifty thousand for sidewalk work relevant to the elementary school projects, safe routes to schools. And then also, I received word that we will be getting, receiving a contract on the DHY grant proposal that we had submitted. Well, Yarmouth, I think, originally submitted it, and we resubmitted it. So we, we are now, I've been, received word that we are in the process of getting that. So the contracts for those two will be coming. The details on the safe routes to schools, I'm in the process. I've, I've been struggling with the computer to, to find the original application, but we will get that original application.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to underscore it again for the minutes, because this has been brought up before. That we applied for it, terrific. That we've been approved for it, terrific. But I don't want to feel like we're being reeled in. So the, the real concern is where the rubber meets the road. What are they asking us to do to get the money? Because some of it may or may not be possible, and we don't know any of the details other than the conceptual. It'd be great to have the kids that have a safe sidewalk to walk to school with. And that's only the abstract thought that we have. We agreed in the last time this came up that we still don't know exactly what it entails, other than the generic part of it.
I'll find, the grant application did have DPW and I think in coordination with the, the county, the county, not commission, yeah, county commission, that they put together estimates for if we have a section of sidewalk that's three foot wide, and we want to widen it to five, what would the material cost be to do that? And then.
And if we have rights of way for all of that.
Yeah, we would have to make sure we have rights of way for all of that. The other part is just at the transition points where sidewalk goes, as people cross the street, you have to have the appropriate slope, and you have to have the, what they call, I guess, a tactile mat. So that way, if a blind person had a cane, they could differentiate between where the sidewalk stops and where the street starts. So that way, they can more readily cross the street safely. It's those kind of elements. And we did look at Sisson and Great Western, or is that still Maine? I think that's still Maine at that section. That it's in the triangle area to try to allow kids to walk safely from the school to Harwich Center. Or hopefully, more importantly, if we get the Harwich Center initiative engaged and, and funded, then onward to not only Brooks Library, but on to the community center. But I, I will try to get, the, the reason why I'm having a little bit of a struggle is, we provided information and someone else submitted the grant application. So we don't, we weren't the repository of all the grant.
Yeah, and I do know that Paul Lag, who's the town planner in Eastham, he's the one who originally mentioned that, that in terms of down in Harwich Port, over on the end of, by, towards Dairy Queen and connecting. And I'm sure that we were even there gonna be able to make the adjustments that we needed to. So I'm sure that, I don't want to say I'm positive, but I think.
Yeah, but just not to confuse people, that is a future project to do additional sidewalk work down by Dairy Queen. We have had several requests to do that, so I don't want people to think this is.
But I mean, the parameters were the same. It was a safe, a safe street, safe routes to school, the, the same kind of thing, so.
And that concludes my report this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Selectman's report, Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And on a happy note, a number of us were at Tom Gagnon's retirement party from the deputy chief. It's, it's always heartwarming to see somebody who's spent that many years in devotion to the town. What was also heartwarming, for people who don't know this, is the close relationship operationally between the fire department and the police department. And they work as one. There's no friction. There's nothing like some other towns might have. These guys have each other's back, and they always have, and it was just terrific to see.
Thank you, Madam. Ed?
No.
Michael?
Chair, Don's comments on the retirement party, it was, it was overwhelming, really. See how many department heads and people were there to support Tom and all the kind words that were said about him. He will be missed.
Larry?
Although, he still says he's not interested in working on the budget. I don't understand it. I will, I will add to that in terms of Norm's here, but in terms of close relationship, I'd throw our harbor master into that too, Donovan Dome. Because there's few towns that, at least when I talk to people, we have not only the fire and police, but we have the harbor master working as closely as we do in our town. So hats off to you, Norman, and to the others. Great job. My other comment, I think it's the first time in months I've driven from my home in east Harwich to the landfill without having to go through road, road, roadwork and detours. It's, you know, it's not a bad town, Harwich, where you can go from one side to the other.
Thank you, Larry. I actually thought about that myself, and, and I would like to echo the event for Tom Gagnon on Friday. It was really wonderful and moving, and really neat to see all those people together in one place to honor somebody and all the great connections throughout time. I, of course, am lucky because I continue to see Tom on my streak. Just want to also remind everybody that Amy Izelski was in front of us today, mentioning that the Arbor Day Seedling Giveaway is on four twenty-six from nine to twelve. And also, the Tour de Trash is being held four twenty-seven from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty with the free lunch. That's at the community center, and you can sign up online. So just remind you, Michael?
If I may, just one last thing. I just wanted to, we were, we were, these were placed in front of our spots tonight, but the Harwich Magazine, done by the Chamber of Commerce, it's eighty pages, supporting a lot of our local businesses, a lot of great articles in here. Great job by the Chamber. And these can be picked up at the Chamber and also probably downstairs, I would imagine, at some point.
It's too bad they use this.
I must say, I love the picture.
It's too bad they use the same pictures that are on your report cover.
That's all.
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
It's so moved.